Good evening. I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates to the necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization structured at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from League of Women Voters Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, "League of Women Voters Rochester, Minnesota," for information and deadlines for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage all citizens to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features the candidates for Olmsted County Board of -- Olmsted County Board, District Number One. Candidates for this seat are Robert Beeman and Stephanie Pedolkey. We are beginning this forum without Mr. Beeman being present because he has been misdirected, and so when he arrives, we will put him in his place, and we will let him give his opening statement, and we will repeat some questions for him. But we are going to begin now with candidate Stephanie Pedolkey. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters Rochester member Kathy Nathan. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by League of Women Voters Rochester members Maggie Brima-John, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Karen Hansen from the Chamber of Commerce. I am going to ask candidate Pedolkey to begin with her two-minute opening statement.
Are you ready with the camera? Okay. I'm Stephanie Pedolkey, and I have represented District One on the county board for the past 10 years. When I and Mike Pedolkey and our two daughters moved to Rochester to open a small business in 1976, Rochester Stained Glass, and settle in, we did not yet know what a unique community we had chosen to live in. This community has supported and given much to us. We had to give back. I decided to serve on numerous committee boards and community boards. We sponsored community events and made stained glass for public installations. Mike decided to serve on the county board, which he did for 25 years, and died unexpectedly while in office. You could say that I had a 25-year mentorship for this position. Many breakfast toasts were buttered while we discussed county problems. As well as a 25-year mentorship, I worked with county clients, social services, and corrections for over 20 years, as a teacher, a program manager of group homes for troubled teens, and an in-home family therapist. I also served for six years as a volunteer director in a local nursing home. Good times, hard times, celebrations, challenges, I am proud to have been part of the team that moved Olmsted County to be one of the most fiscally sound and innovative counties in the state. I'm running to maintain that movement. I'm running because right now, we need experience, knowledge, and steadiness. I know this district, I know this county, I know the elected people, I know the leaders in the city, and that's what I have to offer the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we turn to candidate Robert Beeman, who has just arrived. This is your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you. The mic works? Good. Hi, my name is Robert Bucky Beeman. I am running for Olmsted County, District One, here in Olmsted County. Born and raised in Rochester, Minnesota, I attended public school, all the way from elementary school, Lincoln et Man, up to Century High School, where I graduated in 2008. And I have an entrepreneurial spirit, and I have a great family that's encouraged me to go into my aspirations of being in business. And that led me to working with many different businesses here in the community of all different types of backgrounds and experiences. Unfortunately, in a short amount of time, a lot of it's thanks to my family, thanks to the great community that we reside in, thanks to the people that I've been fortunate to work with. I've had a lot of great success, and I believe that success can continually go through into our local government, both on the city, county levels. And I wanted to get involved, and there is no better place than the county where I believe I can add a lot of impact for our local community. I see areas where I can really make a difference, is the continued economic development. If we look at our time through this pandemic, we're going to have to be on the defense, obviously, of managing our budget very closely, but I also would say we need to be on the offense. We need to look at the properties that we own, we need to look at ways that we can continually lead to growth for our community, create jobs, create affordable housing, and just create this continued success that Ms. Pedolkey and the other commissioners have set up for our community for many years. So I'm excited to serve, I'm excited to continually lead to collaboration with those that are involved in the county level, and I'm looking forward to strengthening the relationships with our city government, with the community as a whole, and bringing light to what the county can and will continually do for years to come.
Thank you. We now turn to the questions for the candidates, and the first question will come to candidate Beeman's first. This is from the public, submitted through the Internet. Has the pandemic changed your view of the role of the county's public health department?
So the pandemic definitely has changed my view as to the involvement that the county has. I think we've seen a great job done by Commissioner Pedolkey and the other commissioners, and also the staff that are currently in place, from delivering services in a different way, whether that has to be through remote or through providing certain services that is going to help individuals that are in tough situations. I think one of the most impacts that I've personally seen has been to the homeless individuals that are here in our community, with the partnerships and collaborations that were created to help provide housing at the civic center, to now rentals that are on Broadway that they've established for those that are in transition. So I think, yes, it has shed some light into how the county has a large involvement, and overall, I think that there's great staff and great leaders in place, and we need to continue that greatness for our county.
Thank you. Candidate Pedolkey.
Yes. Thank you. Well, Dwight Eisenhower said, "Planning is everything; the plan is nothing." Well, that's how we prepared and how the public health department prepared, by planning. We set up emergency plans long before the pandemic, in case there was an emergency, because we know that emergencies also don't follow city lines and county lines. So the relationships that we established with public health helped us, because what we did was provide a central coordination point across all departments and functions. And public health employees gave up their jobs, their desks, they went to that place to work for the public health and for the city and the county. We set up food -- new ways to do food, we set up the Grand Park testing site, we set up new ways to transport people who needed help, and we did set up a homeless shelter very quickly. So the county board, in this case, is the public health board, and we really came through, and that's to do with the staff. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters, and it goes first to candidate Pedolkey. The lack of small houses, townhouses, and apartments has been an issue for our workforce for many years. What is the county's responsibility, and what would you propose to improve affordable housing?
Yes. Well, we are mandated by the state to provide shelter for people who are unable to shelter safely. And part of that has to do with homelessness, and we all know that everyone And part of that has to do with homelessness, and we all know that everyone does better if they know where they're going to lay their head that night. Because the problem with being poor and being homeless is that it takes up all your time. So we have focused on the lowest-income people. That's our job. That's our mandate from the state to do that. And we have found, through this pandemic, we have settled over 3,000 people into either semi-permanent spots or permanent shelter and housing. And we use our HRA that way to provide housing for people, and that's our job to do that.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yes, I can. The lack of small houses, townhouses, and apartments has been an issue for our workforce for many years. What is the county's responsibility, and what would you do to improve affordable housing?
So I believe the county does a great job of continually offering affordable housing and helping those that are homeless. And like Commissioner Pedolkey had said, it's a state mandate that we do help. I think ways that we can continually increase this is by offering what the HRA is already doing, rental assistance. They've been doing it through the pandemic, and we need to find ways where we can continually help those that are in need through rental assistance. I think that we need to look to our partners at the city and see how we can work together with land development that can either encourage for-profit or nonprofit or even government-created housing. And so we're seeing that done in other communities, and I think there's a lot of potential with the properties that we own, that we can create opportunities not only for home rentals, but also for homeownership. And so I would look to bring some fresh perspective to the county to help encourage continued development of rental options, homeownership options, and also help educate those that are looking to get into those housing opportunities.
Thank you. The next question will go first to candidate Beeman, and it will be asked by Karen Hansen of the Chamber of Commerce.
As a commissioner, what steps will you take to continue to support local businesses?
That question for me is an easy question for the fact that I really enjoy local business, and that's where I think my strength lies as a county commissioner and the value I can add. So there's multiple areas where I think we can help our local businesses. One would be helping promote their business. People need to recognize the great community and county that we have and the diverse businesses that are currently here. How do we let the county know that these businesses exist, and how do we encourage their growth? And then the second I would say is how do we help those that are just trying to get off on the right foot? What I've found often in business is the biggest hurdle tends to be space. And so is there opportunities within assets that we control or within assets that we have access to, thanks to partnerships with other entities within government, that we can help people get started off on the right foot, which then in turn could lead to success? At times, it does lead to them not being successful, but through that experiment, it helps us learn more about ourself and more about our county. And also, I would just look at other incentives we can provide as a county. There's tools out there through the state government that if we tap into those tools, it can lead to continued finances being available for our county, which can improve the diversity of our workforce, improve the diversity of our financial feasibility here within the county.
Thank you. Question goes to candidate Pedolkey.
Yes. I have a lot of sympathy for small businesses right now. I have a small business myself. What's happened is land speculation here. DMC has come in, and things have just exploded. And so a lot of small businesses, and especially the ones that are so charming and have these special niches for us, have been assessed because of the way the state has set up assessments long before they actually have the customer base to give them an economic way to pay their property taxes. What the county did was what a lot of counties did this time. We put off penalties for paying tax late. We did it in May. We did it in October. And I was hoping that we could put off assessments until people needed to sell their businesses. And I see I only have 15 seconds left, and there's a lot to talk about with that. But I think the county did as much as it could to help small businesses through this and also with the CARES money that Ready gave out to all our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson of the Rochester Post Bulletin.
The county routinely faces state mandates, and with the likelihood of decreased funding this year. And at the same time, the decision has been made locally to avoid an increase to the county's property tax levy. Where can the county look to trim expenses?
Yes. Well, about 85% of our budget is mandated by the county. That leaves us 15% discretionary money. So the state tells us, describes the situations that people would find themselves in and how we need to help them. So what we did this time, because businesses and people are suffering, we proposed a 0% levy. So one of the things we're doing is a soft hiring freeze. And we hope to have no furloughs and no layoffs, but we don't plan to hire anyone new next year. We've put off a lot of our projects that we wanted to do, that we're beginning, and I'm hoping we get back to those. And the judges, the bench, has been very gracious to allow us not to have to build new chambers for them, because it's very difficult for them to have jury trials in a COVID situation. So all of those things together are ways that the county is trying to mitigate some of this economic crisis.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
Mr. Peterson, could I ask you, Plahley, to repeat it?
The county faces several state mandates with the likelihood of decreased funding. At the same time, the decision has been made to avoid an increase in the county's property tax levy. Where can the county look to trim expenses?
Thank you. So I think some of the areas we need to look at is efficiency. You know, it's unfortunate that we're going through this pandemic, but we're all having to struggle through it. And efficiency can be found in many ways. I think technology is one of those ways. It also could be delivery of services, of looking how we've done things for many years. And this is a time, and I was recently on a board phone call for the YMCA. And as you can imagine, the YMCA is a nonprofit, and town is going through struggles of how to deliver services when it's not safe to necessarily come into the gym in mass amounts of people. So it's changing the way services are delivered, and I think we need to look at that as well at the county level. I think another area that we can look to trim expenses, and it's unfortunate, but people are having to do this across the board, and I've talked to the county administrator, and it's something that's in the foreseeable future, is staff. It is something that, it sounds like it has to happen, and it's not something that I want to advocate for, but I think it's reality. And so we have to take these decisions very, very carefully, and we have to take these decisions with our people and our community in mind of how it's going to affect not only our county, but also how it's going to affect them personally.
Thank you. The next question comes from the general public and goes to candidate Beeman first. What changes or improvements to county parks do you see in the future?
Thanks for the question. So our park system, both at the county level and city level, I would consider are great. I really enjoy our parks. I don't know exactly all of the intricacies of what the parks can improve on, because I've really enjoyed where our parks are, and I'm not in a position personally that I have a young family at this point in my life. But I think what immediately comes to mind is how can we help our younger generation get outside? How can we help them enjoy the outdoors, get away from the iPhone and get away from the computer? And so if I look at improvements that immediately come to mind, it's how can we help create places and things within our parks that will help encourage families and young kids to come out, which in turn will help create a healthier community and also will help our young demographic, the people of our community, be able to enjoy the parks and what they have to offer.
Thank you. Candidate Pedolkey.
Yes. Well, we had a very ambitious program going for updating the nature center at Oxbow Park. Our staff did a wonderful job in applying for legacy funds, and we got a $2 million grant, which we had to match. Oxbow Park is one of the most used parks in southeast Minnesota. It's always full of kids and families camping, picnicking, looking at the animals, having nature lessons. And so we're going to have to put some of that off, at the same time, hope we can hang on to our legacy money, that there isn't a rule that we have to give that back. The other thing we've done is to have the fishing pier out at White Bridge on the newly dredged Lake Zumbrow. So that has a fishing pier and a new public access, what do you call that, a ramp, that boats can get onto the beautiful Zumbrow River. So those are two places where our parks are still working, and hopefully with the friends of Oxbow, the friends of Root River, the friends of Chester, those parks will keep running, because we have a wonderful volunteer family that helps.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters for candidate Pedolkey. The Zumbrow Valley Medical Society has called for the county board to pass a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis.
Yeah.
If the county board adopts such a resolution, what actions should the county take?
The county has been working on this for a long time. We passed a resolution a long time ago called Olmsted One. Olmsted One works to identify, understand, and address systemic and institutional barriers that keep people from having lives of safety and health and well-being. I think what happens a lot of times is that we forget about the difference between equality and equity. That equity means giving people the things they need so they can succeed. Equality is treating people the same. Well, that's a nice goal, but equality doesn't work if people aren't starting in the same place and have the same help, need the same help. So we work on equity, which is to give people what they need, and we're studying that, and we are working all the time to make our programs as equitable and fair, and change them if we need to, and improve them if we need to, to find equity so everyone can have a life of well-being and health and safety in this community.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
Plahley, could I ask you to repeat the question?
Yes, you may. The Zumbrow Valley Medical Society has called for the county board to pass a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. If the county board adopts such a resolution, what actions should the county take?
So I do believe that racism is a public health crisis, whether the county adopts it or not. And I think that we, if it ever is encountered at the county level, at the city level, if as a community member you experience that, you see it, we need to recognize what can be done to stop it, what can be said, where you can go to. And I appreciate that the county and city have come up with things that help encourage the stop of, you know, things such as racism. But I think ultimately, as a community, we need to know how we can stop it as a member that's living in the community. And so it can't just be a press release that leads to some change. It needs to be the community that really fully understands how we can stop this and what can be done in order to help improve our county and help make our county the best that it can be. And I think we have to go out to the community. We have to engage with the community, and they have to not only believe what we're telling them, but also understand how they can make the difference where they sit in their life here in Olmsted County.
Thank you. The next question comes from Karen Hansen of the Chamber of Commerce.
As the lead on public health during COVID-19 pandemic, Olmsted County has significant responsibility to work with local entities to keep people safe and educated. What steps will you take to continue this community outreach and education?
Thank you for the question. I have seen a really good improvement from the county level of outreach versus both online and also through the media. So I think that continued communication style has to occur. We're living in an era where people are spending more times on their phones than they are outside, and so we need to continually use technology to our advantage. At the same point, I think as a county, we need to improve the recognition of who we are as a county, the leaders within the county and the staff within the county, and I think that's through getting involved and being out there. I can't tell you how many people have commented to me and said, "You're running for city council," and they don't understand that there is actually commissioners at the county level. And so I think there's a lot of room for improvement of getting out there in the community and just letting people know how their thoughts can affect the way our community and our county can be created and do the best version of itself for years to come.
Thank you. Candidate Pedolkey.
Well, we opened testing sites. We started an emergency operations center, and we have every Friday morning a report from public health that tells us how many new cases, unfortunately, how many people have died from this in the past week, and how many positive tests we have. I don't know exactly what we can do besides, you know, closing everything down again. We've warned people. We have our reports. They come out in the newspaper. They come out on radio. They come out on television. They're available online. We had to close a bar down for 72 hours last week because people weren't following the rules, over and over again. Masks, hand washing, keep your distance. And I would love to know some new ways that we could reach people who aren't already convinced that this is a dangerous situation, and we need to take care of ourselves and each other.
Thank you. The next question, which goes to candidate Pedolkey, is from Randy Peterson.
District One sits in the center of Rochester. How does that impact the role the District One Commissioner has when it comes to making decisions and addressing countywide efforts that include surrounding areas and smaller towns?
Yes. Well, I do represent District One, and I pay attention to when something comes in front of the county board that will affect my district. For example, the rapid bus transit plan that was going to maybe close down Third Avenue. I really lobbied for that not to happen. So things that affect my district, I work on, but I need to know what happens in other districts. We, all seven of us, are responsible for the county as a whole, and we pay attention to roads and different issues. The big thing in my district now is the Seneca Land, which is on the Grand Park property, and what to do with that. I will have a lot of good ideas, I think, about how we can use that to enhance our community. And that's, for me, the biggest impact on District One at the moment, as well as how to get all the workers into Rochester and have them park and get to work and get home safely. And the Mayo Clinic is right in the center of District One.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
Plahley, could I ask you to repeat it, Mr. Peterson? Thank you.
District One sits in the center of Rochester. How does that impact the role of the District One Commissioner when it comes to making decisions and addressing countywide efforts that include the surrounding rural areas and smaller towns?
Yeah, so representing District One as a county commissioner, it definitely has a large impact in our community because of so many people that live within District One and the large workforce in District One. Now, like Commissioner Pedolkey had said, the different commissioners do represent other areas that may be more rural. And so we, as the District One County Commissioner, have to take in all opinions, all thoughts of all the different commissioners and all the different constituents that we represent as a county. That being said, I do feel that being boots on the ground, being somebody that's very involved in the community, that I can represent District One extremely well, because I do know what's happening. know what's happening for our business community, and I can learn more about what's happening for those that are living within this district. And I hope my opinion and my thoughts and what I'm hearing from the constituents within this district, I can help then inform the other county commissioners so that they understand the difficulties, the challenges, and even the positives that we have within this core area.
Thank you. The next question comes from the public. What approaches could be used to improve the relationships between the county and the townships?
Thank you for the question. Can we first?
Yes.
Perfect. Communication, I think that communication is at the core of so much. I've had the opportunity to meet with just a few, well, one specifically township individual, and that being said, I think that communication is something we need to work on, not only with the townships, but with other entities within government. And so, it's going to them, it's learning about their land that they represent, it's learning about the challenges they might have, how they're trying to create their township into what is the best version of the township they believe is for themselves and for the families they're raising there, their businesses they're running there. And so, I think it's communicating with them, trying to build bridges relative to the challenges we may have in District One or other parts of the county, and informing them how together we can just make our county the best that it possibly can be. And I just look forward to building those relationships and listening and learning about what they are dealing with on a daily basis.
Candidate Padulke.
Yes. In the past, it was rather adversarial between the townships and the county, and I have seen over the last 25 years those relationships improve until there really doesn't seem to be too much conflict anymore between the townships and the cities, one of the, excuse me, and the county. One of the things we do, of course, is we share roads and we have to share heavy equipment, and I think that our Public Works Department is remarkable in their cooperation with the townships and when it comes to snow plowing and road grading, and mostly that is the concern of townships, is how to keep those roads passable and traffic running. Also, for example, we've been encouraging our townships to come up with ideas for how to spend their CARES money, the money that the state gave us for improving things. If they don't use their CARES money, then we have to give it back, and that would be a pity. So, that's one of the ways that the county and the townships work together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters. The state of Minnesota has made a policy decision to limit road construction to currently existing highways. Should the county adopt a similar policy?
I don't know. I would, I don't know the answer to that. Should we adopt a policy to stop construction on anything except highways?
To only, to only, to keep existing roads, to limit construction to currently existing highways and roads.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, the way that the county can build new roads, and we're trying to build a new beltline again around another circle drive out further, is we have to bank miles. Anytime we build a road for a city or a county to their specifications and then turn it over to the city or the township, those miles get put in our bank account. And then when we have enough miles in our county bank account, we're allowed to build a new road using that many miles. So we've been saving miles for a long time to build the new beltline around the city, and that will be 60th on the west side, and I'm not sure where it is going to be on the east side. And we always need new roads, we always need to move people, and that's what the county roads do. They move people.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
What comes to mind for me is that, you know, we don't want to stifle growth, and we want to encourage growth. Now, there's the two sides of that, is it smart growth, or is it growth just for the sake of getting someone from A to B, and is there another route they can get there? And so I think we need to look at it through the lens of, is it going to increase potential for economic development? Are we doing a road because there's going to be more jobs offered in that area, and we need to help get people there safely and smoothly? Or is it just that we're improving a road that otherwise that budget could be allocated somewhere else that potentially would lead to the budget not necessarily being per se wasted? And so I think we need to look at any additional roads through the multiple lens, gather all the different opinions, and see, you know, how is it going to affect our budget, our community, and how is it going to help us advance as a county overall?
Thank you. The next question, which goes to candidate Beeman first, is from Karen Hansen.
As a commissioner, how will you communicate with citizens, businesses, and local government?
Thank you for the question. I'm very active online, so that's an easy one for me, is just being available through the internet. People can access me through many means of social media, you can find me there. But also, I would say I look forward to going out to, like I had mentioned in the township conversation, to individuals, to the people that have their thoughts that want to be shared. I think there's no better way than actually getting out to the situation, getting out to the place, getting out to the people where they reside or where they work, and so I am looking forward to that. On top of that, I think I'm looking forward to working through the staff members at the county, and, you know, they are essentially out there on the ground, delivering the services and helping make this county what it is and what it can become. And so I think I need to improve the communication between the commissioner in my seat and with the staff members and learn more and more about what they're dealing with each and every day and how I can help make their job easier and help their customers that they're delivering services to.
Thank you. The next question comes from, did we, okay, candidate Padulke, just tell me when I goof up. Thank you.
Far be it for me to do that. So, I have always thought on the board that we never do a good enough job advertising ourselves. We have a really efficient and wonderful county, and we need to do some PR. You really don't hear too much about the county in headlines in terms of big problems. And so, we now have a PAC committee, which puts out public announcements every week. We have work to improve our website, and as for contacting me, I think everyone knows they can call me, they can email me. I'm on at least 12 different committees, so I go lots of meetings every month, and people can approach me and ask me questions. And, yes, I wish we could announce to everyone what a great county and how efficient we are.
Thank you. The next question comes from the League of Women Voters, and it goes to candidate Padulke first.
Okay.
Since 2000, several county and city departments consolidated, and now some are separating. How is this going to affect cooperation between the county and the city?
Well, we came up with a hybrid plan for the planning committee, planning and land use and zoning. It seemed very complicated to me, and I wasn't exactly sure of all the issues, but the city wanted, I believe, to make things work more efficiently and easier for developers. And perhaps that's happened, now that we have a different planning committee. I'm not sure about that because everything's a mess right now with COVID. We certainly have to do something with dispatch. That has been a problem for the difference between the Sheriff's Department and the law enforcement department as to who covers dispatch, where the office will be, who answers the phone, who responds first. I'm not sure what other departments, at the moment, it escapes me, have come together and then come apart.
Thank you. Candidate Beeman.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Since 2000, several county and city departments consolidated, and now some are separating. How is this going to affect cooperation between the county and the city?
Well, I would say distance, and we're all dealing with distance through learning and communication, does affect your day-to-day operations and your ability to get things done. And I think that we have to learn then, through this separation, how we can continually work, if not at the same level, hopefully a better level. And again, that takes that communication of seeing how we can come together, of recognizing that we are all in this together, we're all trying to make, whether I'm representing the county and someone else is representing the city, we're all trying to make this entire area better together. And if we can put our egos aside, and if we can put the challenges aside, I think that together we can really improve our community, and that communication will lead to that. So I think also, besides just seeing the separation as a negative, we need to then go to those that are getting the services and seeing how they're seeing the separation. Is it affecting them on a day-to-day basis? For example, the land use, the zoning, are the developers, are those trying to even simply build a home, and I say simply in regards to a large complex versus a small home, but they're both complex, are they having issues? And how can we make sure that they're not getting over those, they're not being denied the ability to get things done in an efficient manner? So we need to make sure that those that are receiving the services are still getting what they expected.
The next question, and I think this will be the last question, comes from the public, and it goes first to candidate Beeman. What do you think will be the most challenging aspect of being a member of the Board of Commissioners for Olmsted County?
Being on time. No, I apologize. I was, I was tardy this evening, and I apologize for wasting everybody's time this evening, but thank you for still allowing me to sit here and share. I think the most challenging thing for me is going to be, and I had talked to a previous county commissioner, it's learning the complexity of what our county does as its own entity, and there is a lot of complexity to it. And that takes time, that takes, like I said, getting in the trenches, getting to know the staff members, getting to know everybody's strength, and really recognizing where I can add value and where I need to lean on other county commissioners and other staff members so that they can make sure that we're operating at the level that we truly can as a county. So I think it's just learning the depths of services and the depth of abilities we have as a county, and then figuring out where I can add value through the support of the community members that are voting for me.
Candidate Padulke.
Yes. As a county, we have three fundamental goals. We have to assure that we have a safe and healthy community, we have to be stewards of the environment, and we have to maintain the foundations of democracy. So, when you are on the county board, you are on many committees, and there is a county board representative on most agencies that receive any county funding. So there's lots to learn about air, soil, water, about public safety, about public health, about community services, about elections, about IT, about public works, about the waste of energy facility, and all of that's a learning curve. You serve on committees, you ask questions, you get updated by those departments, which do a very good job if there's an issue coming up, to educate us ahead of time so that we can make decisions that are sound and good for the future. There's a lot going on at the county level, and a commissioner is responsible for a lot of things. I listed just a few of them. Thanks.
Thank you. This concludes the question part of our evening. We will now turn to closing statements, and because candidate Padulke spoke first in the opening, candidate Beeman will speak first. You have two minutes to give us your closing.
Sounds good. My name is Robert, my nickname is Bucky, so most people will call me that, my last name is Beeman. I was born and raised here in Rochester. I've been fortunate to receive the benefits our community has to offer from a city level to county level. I've been fortunate to go through the public school system and see all that education is involved and what it can do for my life. And here I sit today at a point in my life where I'm 30 years old, and over the last 10-plus years, I've been involved in business and collaborating with many different business owners with ideas and dreams, and I've seen success. And that success can continually ring through not only the private sector, it can ring through the public sector, the nonprofit sector, and I'm looking to continually add my input through working with others that will lead to the best county for myself, for my family, for everybody that resides here in this county, and for those that are looking to move to this county. And I think through my involvement and through my continued ambition and hard work and through my capabilities of listening and learning, that I'll be able to add a lot of value to this county, and I look forward to listening and learning from you, and I look forward to just making our county the best that it possibly can be. So to learn more about me and my campaign, my website's votebucky.com. I'd love your support, I'd love your questions, and I just look forward to serving here at the county level for years to come, and I also look forward to hopefully providing some light to those that are considering stepping up into a leadership position, that it is possible, that you can put your hand up, you can put your foot forward, and that you can get involved. And I hope that through my involvement, it can help share with others that it is very possible to get involved in our community.
Candidate Padulke.
Thank you. Thank you for also providing this opportunity for the community to get to know us better. This has been a challenging year, and next year looks to be even more challenging. We're dealing with the perfect storm of public health crisis, public safety crisis, economic and social justice crisis. It won't be easy, and it's not a time for beginners. If elected, I will be the chair of the county board next year. We all are recipients of decisions made long ago by past boards. We sit in the shade of trees we didn't plant, we send our children to schools we didn't build, we drive on roads we didn't construct. So even as we navigate these difficult times at the county board, we have to make decisions that will impact things far into the future. I would like future folks to sit in the shade of trees that I helped to plant. Almost every job in my long working career prepared me to make policy at the county level. I've seen enough of courage and pain and despair and resilience and love to understand our community and what's important. I have a strong belief in the possibilities of human potential and the possibilities of social change, and I trust that my decisions in the past 10 years as a county commissioner helped make Olmsted County a better place for us all to live. The pandemic put several important projects on hold. I want to be at the table when we recover from the crisis to get those programs and initiatives back on track. I hope I have your trust and have earned your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you, the viewers, that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3, and that early voting has already started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit mnvotes.org for more information on the process. That's m-n-v-o-t-e-s dot org. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or you would like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org. That's V-O-T-E four one one dot org. To see this forum again or to access the forums that have happened previously, visit the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody.[1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30][1789.30] Good night, everybody.[1788.86] (applause)